Good afternoon. In compliance with Chapter 551, Open Meetings of the Texas Government Code, I call to order a special retreat of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Saturday, March 25th, 2023, at 12:06 PM. A quorum of the Board is physically present at AIST's central office to conduct this meeting. This meeting is streaming live on AIST TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on Cable Channel 22 through Spectrum, Estown Broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available in these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. To our audience tuning in remotely and here in person, welcome and thank you for joining us. We'll move to the approval of the agenda. Trustee Kaufman, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Having a motion by trustee Kaufman and -- oh, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So, having a motion by trustee Kaufman and a second by trustee Hunter to approve the agenda, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. All right. Trustee Kaufman, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the pledge to the Texas flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we will now move to public testimony for the action item on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public testimony called a dedicated AIST phone line and advanced the meeting to sign up to speak in person or to audio-record their remarks. And today, we have one person signed up to speak in person, and we have two who left a recorded message. So, we will now move to in-person testimony, and you'll have one minute. Callers, I believe we only have one, so -- and it is Zenobia. Hold on, let me get your last name. Joseph, thank you. So, we will now ask Ms. Joseph to come to the mic. Thank you.
May I, Madam President?
Microphone, please.
Thank you, Madam President, members. I'm Zenobia Joseph. My comments are specifically related to Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, which prohibits discrimination based on race, color, or national origin. And I would ask specifically that trustees Foster and Candace Hunter amend the superintendent profile to include the centuries-old crisis that was mentioned on March 9th, 2023 during your information session, specifically the failure of African-American students to read on grade level. Dr. Reach has some documents for you to review, and also an anthology that includes information that I shared with Mr. Hicks when we met on March 8th, 2023. Specifically, I just would call to your attention that diversity, equity, and inclusion is more than rhetoric. And specifically, I just want you to recognize that recently, you actually excluded African-American males when you had your Black Table Talk, and you also, in 2018, for Naomi Lanz, actually had her share her valedictorian award with a white student. And so, I just want you to recognize those disparities, and would ask you to consider amending the superintendent profile to include that information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph. We will now play the recorded messages for public testimony, so please listen carefully.
This is Sharon Vane, the parent of a Bowie High School junior and a 2022 AIST graduate. I'm calling to offer feedback on the superintendent profile. I appreciate the profile's attention to addressing the important issue of student achievement for our historically struggling learners, the clarity around our need for a leader who will be here for longer than a year and a half, and demonstrated ability to address teacher morale and retention. I want to highlight the profile's attention to transparency as well, and ask that the Board adopt a process more transparent than announcing a lone finalist. Many possibilities exist between a completely open process and a lone finalist process, such as announcing a group of finalists and/or having stakeholders meet with those finalists. Rebuilding trust and transparency in our district leadership starts with this process. Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Soy un padre de AIST. Mi nombre es Minerva Méndez. Estoy hablando acerca del nuevo intendente de AIST. Lo que yo estoy pidiendo para esta persona es de que tenga ánimos de trabajar y venga con nuevos proyectos para trabajar con los estudiantes, que tenga nuevos proyectos con los maestros, y sobre todo, que tenga suficiente ánimo para trabajar, porque nos han dejado a medias los otros superintendentes. Necesitamos que sepa hablar tanto el inglés como su primer idioma. El segundo, que también traiga el idioma español, porque las escuelas también somos de hispanos. Lo que necesitamos es de que tengan metas para los estudiantes.
This is an interpretation from Minerva Méndez. Good afternoon. I'm an AIST parent. My name is Minerva Méndez, and I'm calling about the new AIST superintendent. What I am asking is for that person to have the drive to work, and that the person bring new projects to work with students, and that the person have new projects for teachers, and above all, enough enthusiasm to work, because the other superintendents have left us hanging. We need that person to be able to speak both English as the first language, and the second language be Spanish, because in the schools, we are all so Hispanic. What we need is for that person to have goals established for our students.
Thank you. So, as a reminder to the public, please feel free to share any general comments or questions on non-voting items with the Board by email at trustees@austinisd.org. So, we will now move to our action item, which is the approval of the superintendent profile. You all may recall that earlier this week, we met and we discussed the superintendent profile with our search firm, GR Recruiting. We also had -- so, we made some changes to the draft that was presented to the Board, and that was based largely on the community input that's happened over the last several weeks, as well as input from our trustees. And we appreciate the folks in the community that have all given us some things, some really important things to think about. So, at this time, we will move to the action item. So, trustee Foster, do we have a motion?
Sure. I move that we adopt the superintendent profile.
Thank you. Trustees, is there any discussion on this item?
Do you need a second?
Yeah. Do I need a second? I do not need a second. No, feel free to -- not yet. Yes, questions, comments?
So, yeah, I want to thank everyone who's given public comment here today, and also those who've reached out to us of different forms, emailing us conversations in the community. In my conversations with the community, I've heard concerns about fine arts programming not being included. And when looking through the superintendent profile, I think adding that equity in programming, we have a lot of really important programs in the district that are extracurricular for academics that are very important. So, I'd like that to be added somewhere in the profile.
Do you have some guidance, Dr. Reach, on the order of the motions? Because I believe we're going to have several amendments to this. So, should we do them one by one, or? Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, so.
As a point of privilege, can we recess for about 30 seconds so I can get my computer? Because I can't look at this.
Oh, of course.
Thank you.
Yes, we will recess for a minute. How's that? Thank you. Okay, I believe we are back from our one-minute recess. Thank you all. So, thank you trustee Whitley Chu for proposing some changes to the superintendent profile, particularly around the arts. Do you have specific language for that motion, or would you like a couple of minutes to look that up?
I'd like a couple of minutes to see where it would best fit in, and I'm open to suggestions as well.
Okay. So, trustees, any other -- yes, trustee Hunter.
Okay. I'd like to propose a motion to amend Point 2 on the superintendent profile form, which currently reads, "Has demonstrated leadership and success in processes that center equity, inclusion, and create a safe environment for diversity, including diversity of race, socioeconomic need, ability, language, and other measures that are important factors." I would like to amend it to say, "Has demonstrated leadership and success in processes that center equity, inclusion, and create a safe environment for diversity, including diversity of race, socioeconomic need, ability, language, and budgeting, comma, budgeting, and other measures that are important factors."
Thank you. Trustee Kaufman, did you have a comment on that?
I'd like to comment on the comment. I'm not sure.
Yes.
Okay. I want to recommend that we place the budget on the first point instead, because the way I just heard it, it sounds like we're talking about diversity of budget. And so, I would propose, and I don't know if I moved to this, or if I'm just commenting on hers, but I would like to add that to the first -- I have language to add that to the first point instead.
Okay.
I accept the change.
Okay. So, I have for the first line, and in reference to what our public comment Ms. Joseph said, I would like to amend the first line to add four words. So, it would read, "Is able to lead a large organization dedicated to achieving ambitious goals," to ensure that we're talking about achieving the goals, not simply setting them. "That will increase student achievement across all demographic groups with a track record of making strategic decisions that consider both immediate needs and long-term goals, and of creating systems and budgets to ensure long-term success."
Thank you. Okay, so, I'm hearing like three different, like three different ideas from our trustees to maybe incorporate into this. So, and Ms. Vidia, let me know if I'm violating Robert's rules here. Okay. But, so, one is related to budgeting, you know, like doing our budget through an equity lens is kind of what I took away from yours. I also heard our public commenter talk about calling out the need for, you know, acknowledging -- yeah, okay, acknowledging some of these deep and longstanding inequities and opportunities and outcomes, particularly for African-American students. And then, I also heard something about arts. Does that cover, are there any other concepts that trustees would like to include? And then, we can kind of go systemically.
I have a very minor one that's just a word choice.
Okay.
Regarding, it's just a word choice, but it's not related to those.
Okay, cool. All right. So, let's start with the -- so, if y'all don't mind, I'm going to ask trustee Kaufman to make his motion regarding the easy one, so we get that out of the way.
So, my easy one is just about changing socioeconomic need to socioeconomic status. So, it's not to portray it as a deficit piece, but just as a recognition of the diversity.
And which bullet was that?
So, that would be in the second line. And so, it would read, "Has demonstrated leadership and success in processes that center equity, inclusion, and create a safe environment for diversity, including diversity of race, socioeconomic status, ability, language, and other measures."
Okay, great.
And there's a grammatical thing in there as well, I just caught when I read it out loud, because it would have to say something like "center equity and inclusion" and "create a safe environment."
Okay.
So, it would be adding the word "and" in between equity and inclusion.
Okay. So, trustee Kaufman has made a motion to amend the second trait in our profile to read that centers equity and inclusion.
And diversity? And diversity of -- including diversity of race?
Well, we have diverse.
I'm not sure where the language of "create a safe environment for diversity" came from, because I feel like previously it was written to "center equity, inclusion, and diversity" in those processes. And so, I feel like actually, we would be better perhaps to just delete the "create a safe environment," because that, this is about leadership and the processes, and ensuring that those processes are centered on our core values of equity, inclusion, and diversity. So, I feel like it's a separate issue of creating a safe environment. It's about centering these things. So, I would amend my proposal, so I would move that we change the second characteristic to be, "Has demonstrated leadership and success in processes that center equity, inclusion, and diversity, including diversity of race, socioeconomic status, ability, language, and other measures that are important factors for success."
Thank you. Yes, please.
Mic, please.
Yes.
Okay. You should treat this maybe as discussion on a motion to approve, and so, these changes can all be incorporated into one motion to approve.
Okay.
Since you're changing it on the dais.
Thank you.
I think ultimately, you're going to have one document you can approve.
I love that. Are you all okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. So, okay, so, I appreciate that. Trustees, do you all have any comments on that one? Dr. Reach, did you get that verbatim? Oh, look at that technology. Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Presidency, do we need to withdraw our motions? It's because they're lingering.
Yes, I think it would be best to withdraw any pending motions and just treat this as discussion and a motion ultimately to approve as amended.
Yes.
Not Kevin's motion to approve.
Okay. So, yes, trustee Hunter?
I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
And I also withdraw my motion to amend.
And I also withdraw my motion to amend.
Thank you. So, we're -- so, right now, we're operating under Vice President Foster's motion to approve this item, and we are now just in discussion. So, we have discussed trustee Kaufman's suggestion, and that's up on the board, so all can see that. And then, who would like to go next? Trustee Hunter?
So, I like Dr. Kaufman's, I think where we moved it, I don't need to do anything more than that when we get to the final document. On Point 7, ensure, I think, I'm going to read it and then read it how I think it would be best read or best entered. "Ensures and inspires a culture that believes in and achieves high academic standards for all students, uses data to address the achievement gap in alignment with our values, and supports strength across many programs." So, here where it says "addresses the achievement gap," I don't know if we can have a parenthetical statement that says between African-American and Hispanic, African-American, comma, Hispanic, comma, and students experience poverty, comma, and their peers. Or no, yeah, and their peers.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Reach, for putting that up there. Trustees, any comments on that?
That is getting more specific, and I like it, and I don't know how to do this, but the achievement gap we should be addressing is the achievement gap between any group of students and excellence, as opposed to an achievement gap between black and white, brown and white, da-da-da-da-da. I don't know how to capture that the achievement gap, to be specific, of what the achievement gap we're talking about, between where a student is and excellence. I don't know. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I like -- yes.
Yeah. I would second that idea that, that some of our processes and goals need to be very specific, so that we're meeting the needs of particular students, but overall, we need to create systems that are elevating all students and closing the gaps for all. And so, as we start to name one or two groups, now we're excluding students who are emergent bilingual students, we're excluding kids who are experiencing, who are receiving special education services, we're not attending to our Native American indigenous population who also have gaps. And so, I think that we have to, through our words and through our actions and through our interviews, we have to absolutely pay special attention to the historical problems that we have created for African-American students, and that is very real, and that is a very significant challenge. And we have to, you know, do that similar work for each, for other groups as well. I'm just wary of naming it here. But I do think, I wanted to acknowledge that the longstanding institutionalized and systematic and deliberate segregation and denial of rights that we've done to our African-American community in this city is real, and we have to acknowledge and recognize that as also something very special that we have to attend to, but not necessarily by naming one or two or three groups in our document.
Thank you, trustee Kaufman.
So, one possibility, and I appreciate this, it's a tough conversation, because it's a both and, and then one of the things that happens is when we lift up any specific group that has been specifically targeted or specifically addressed, kind of like All Lives Matter, it becomes an All Lives Matter, right? So, we're not intending exclusion by saying Black Lives Matter, or, you know, whatever it is. So, we never want to, to my mind, we don't want to shift to All Lives Matter, but we also don't want to lose any of our population. So, it's like, how do you get to the both and and capture that spirit in your language? And I don't think I'm expert. Two possibilities. Ensures and inspires a culture, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, uses data to address the achievement gaps that exist between any and all groups of students and academic excellence, or the achievement gaps that exist between each of our groups of students and academic excellence. I don't know if that sounds worse, or if that sounds like we're getting there.
Can we somehow name the ways that those gaps have been created? Like, to address achievement gaps, blah, 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 systemic, blah, 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 policies, blah, 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 discrimination? Like, to put language in there that identifies that this is not just gaps between, you know, this privileged group and this privileged group, right? It's really looking at our underserved populations, and those that we've excluded through deliberate actions.
I think what would be very powerful, if I may, is to have some language in here that just names, like, we want, we're looking for somebody who acknowledges and, who acknowledges and is willing to fix the longstanding racist, you know, systemic racism in our city and school district, and close these longstanding gaps between student groups and excellence, something like that. I feel like what I'm hearing is we need to name the racism, the institutional racism.
I agree.
Can I try?
I would love for you to try.
I think I'm a little bit closer than I was before. Okay. So, where it says "addresses the achievement gap," then a parenthetical statement that refers to the disparity in academic performance between groups of students due to -- dot, dot, dot.
Yep.
Okay? And then, we can plug in there what we think we should best plug in there.
"Achievement gaps resulting from racism, classism, xenophobia, and other expressions of historic and current discrimination." "Resulting from racism, classism, xenophobia, and other expressions of historic and current discrimination." But it's, man, it's a clunky sentence.
It's a clunky history.
It's a clunky history. "And that exist between groups of students and academic excellence." And maybe someone can further clean it up.
Let's see.
What do you got, Jacob? Are you keeping, like, are you our master scribe? Sure. I've got "achievement gaps resulting from racism, classism, xenophobia, and other expressions of historic and current discrimination," comma, this is where it gets weird, "and that exist between our groups."
Hold on, wait a minute, he's not historic or current. He said "and current."
And current, mhm.
Now you go.
"And that exist between our groups of students and academic excellence."
You don't need the "and."
Okay. "Our groups of students and academic excellence." Trustee Hunter said maybe not "our."
Just groups of students.
Okay.
I'm not sure we need the "and."
I really like that we're shifting to this idea that the definition of the gaps is between groups and academic excellence, rather than this group and that group.
That group. I appreciate that.
I really, it does make that clunky, and I wonder, since we've adjusted the other part of it to talk about where the origins of the achievement gaps, whether we still need to name that here on this document.
One more time.
I wonder, I like that we're shifting that term, I'm going to adopt that and try to really play with that in my, to really think through the implications of that and start using that language when I talk about the achievement gaps. Although, I wonder whether that line needs to be in this document, whether we need to define achievement gaps as that in this document, if we're already naming that we're talking about gaps that have resulted from discrimination.
So, what would you propose?
Well, I'm just looking at all the red that's on there, and that we still have to work on connecting it to the second half of the thing, so I'm just wondering if we would.
I think it's an actually really, really pointed problem. Like, for instance, we all, trustee Hunter shared one recently, and it's one I've experienced on multiple occasions too, where I've heard either teachers or principals speak to, "Well, you can do as good as the West Side." "Well, you can do at least as good as that." And like, I've heard, over the decades, I've heard that so many times, and that it's almost worth really lifting up. And so, you know, I don't know, maybe not here, but it's a paradigm shift that we need.
Yeah. And, okay, I support that, and the idea that it's never too early to start that conversation with the next superintendent. So, the conversation starts when they read this document, so.
Can the sentence be broken up? I would ask anybody, including Jacob, like, can it become two sentences?
Because it's not a real sentence, though, right?
Do we need to have the text that's after the change, like, after the word, the red excellence parentheses? Like, the, yeah, "in alignment with our values and support strength across many programs," because I feel like.
That's assumed, it's in the profile.
Yeah.
So, we could take it out.
I think we could take that out.
And I'd have to look to see where else it is. it is, I just, I know that the in alignment with our values was deliberately attached to achieving high academic standards, because there are ways to, to achieve high test scores that are not in alignment with our values.
Well, that, that would be a different idea, though.
Okay.
I think this sentence is about the historic
Okay.
disparities and opportunities and discrimination and all that, but keep, I, I would say, like, I like, but we should, but it should be included somewhere, I don't want to, I, I don't know, maybe it can go here, but-
I'll work to add it to the first line, I think it works in the first one.
Okay.
In a different, in a different-
In a different way, yeah.
Line, or characteristic one.
This deserves probably its own bullet point.
So does that clean us up? Where are we? Because I sure can't read that stuff.
Yeah, if we get rid of in alignment with our values and support strength across many programs, that'll be where we are now.
We can delete that.
Delete that last sentence.
Okay.
Or that last fragment of the fragment.
Yeah.
I want to, like, travel with this mic, so I want to look down there.
And, yeah, you can, you can keep going, Jacob, all the way to the word in, yeah.
I'm still on the dice, Jacob.
Yeah, take all that out.
He's listening, he's on the dice.
Okay.
I think we do have to pause.
He's got to go read.
Oh, wait, or you have to-
No, he's got to go read. He's just got to go read. He's still touching.
He's, he's okay? He's okay, the lawyer says-
She's seeing her eyes.
It can't be put on our screen, Jacob.
How do you drive? Okay. So, I'm just going to read this out loud for us. Ensures and inspires a culture that believes in and achieves high academic standards for all students, uses data to address the achievement gap resulting from racism, classism, xenophobia, and other expressions of historic and current discrimination that exist between groups of students and academic excellence. So I'm wondering, I think, oh, do we just need an and? Like, ensures and inspires a culture that believes in, and achieves a high academic standards for all students, and uses data to address the achievement gap resulting from racism, et cetera. Yes.
Student groups, please.
Yeah, yeah, maybe we don't need the parentheses.
No, we don't need the parenthetical statement.
Okay. All right, so, Candace, would you like to read the final sentence?
Ensures and inspires a culture that believes in and achieves high academic standards for all students, and uses data to address the achievement gap resulting from racism, classism, xenophobia, and other expressions of historic and current discrimination, and that exists between student groups and academic excellence.
And then the achievement gaps.
Plural. And the black. It was there.
Right where your cursor is.
Yeah, it was there.
Okay.
No, it wasn't, I bet.
Thank you.
In that first sentence, yes, or the second sentence, you mean? Yes.
Okay.
If, if, if we were to put achievement gaps that exist between student groups and academic excellence that have resulted from racism, classism, that would be more clear to me.
So?
To, to shift, if we took the, um, if we said data to address the achievement gaps, and then pulled in that exists between student groups and academic excellence, and put it there.
Oh, yeah, from.
Now, we've named the gaps and defined it, and then we put the cause.
That's helpful.
Mhm, mhm.
Good.
Oh, that's good.
Yes.
Is someone working on the arts and programming already?
Yes.
I'm not calling, I'm just trying to make sure I don't.
Yeah, because, so, you know, where we see the, so we took out, like, the program, and so maybe that was what it was meant to address, like, the word programs, but I think that can mean lots of things. So I'm trying to find a good place for it to, to fit in. Oh, for the arts one?
Yes.
Okay.
May I ask a clarifying question? For the arts, are we, for fine arts and other programming, are we trying to get to, um, equitable access, are we trying to get to, uh, budgeting, or just the, where it says that's in a strengthening, strength across all programs, support strength across all programs?
That could be a good place for the, in budgeting.
Okay.
And, which one is- Because I have the, I have the old copy of this, this moving document, that's, well, it's now the old copy.
Okay, so which, um, bullet point was that, Trustee Hunter?
It's, and I think that's a specific request of our community, because they, you know, they feel like it was something that was, um, not focused on previously, and they, they really want to make sure we ensure that with the next superintendent, which we can ensure that in interviews, there's lots of ways to do it.
We did have at some point, kind of a laundry list, I can't remember which it was attached to, that we, we talked about and then eliminated, that was really talking about a lot of our programs, early college, dual language, CTE,
Dart to the end, you said?
And I think, you know, like, there, there is, we want to be concise, we, we want to be brief, but, you know, we want to, we want to be thorough as well, and I've applied for many jobs, like, our teaching position jobs have longer explanations than this, um, so I do believe in a superintendent's candidate's ability to, to be able to read this document with a few extra sentences, yeah, thank you.
This sentence, um, if I, can I ask again, Catherine? If we bring that sentence, strength across all programs, can we use that and then find a place forward so that we are ensuring that that person understands that we do want that? Strength, or do we need to specifically get to budgeting across all programs? I mean, I'm not sure.
I mean, do y'all like the idea of lis- of adding, there is a good, you know, I mean, special education and multilingual education are, or a bit different, these are like legal rights that students have, so I don't know if that's a good place or not.
I would feel comfortable having a separate bullet.
I don't know. I think we can add another bullet.
And with, with our college and career, and with, and naming the programs.
I think we're talking about, like, this theme of equitable access to, like, whole child, whole student, you know, including the art, you know, it's like, all of that. What we're try, part of what I hope we're conveying in this profile is that we don't somebody who's going to come in here with, like, a very military mindset, and like, we're going to test, test, test to get these outcomes, you know, that we're going to put a lot of prescriptive structures, because those are our values, right, to, to make sure that we are really being collaborative and allowing our teachers to teach, but we also want to make sure that our students are experiencing a full, um, curriculum with arts and everything else. So would you all, so do we agree that we have one bullet that's sort of a com- a new bullet that encompasses all of that? And I invite any of you to propose the language that might do just that.
Do you want to say has, experience, or demonstrated success, which, which should we?
I don't care.
Okay, then, let's just-
Or strong commitment to.
Strong commitment to.
I'm going to check, there was some public feedback, via social media, that had some suggested language, let me check and see if I can find that.
Were you in Word or Google Docs?
I need has or demonstrated.
I was in Word. And I deleted it.
Is it in Google Docs? You can go back to the-
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll run the video.
Okay, can I, if I may read the comment, and then we can see if there's language in it. "We would like to see the list of profile characteristics expanded to include experience in the system-wide alignment of a range of programs, including the arts, which are needed to ensure equity and excellence throughout students' educational journeys. A leader who ensures and inspires a culture that believes in and achieves high academic standards for all students, uses data to address the achievement gap in alignment with our values, and supports strength across many programs, including fine arts, physical education, career and technical education, social and emotional learning, and creative learning." So is there language from there that we can pull in?
I like it.
Oops. I heard it, I heard it in two places.
I think we can probably make it more concise, like, I think it captures some of what we're talking about, I'm not sure if that's exactly-
And it also includes some things that we, I think, have touched on, so I think we can pull out the parts that are missing.
Is there any, I know that this is our action item, is there any way we can vote on this action item as we close the meeting at the end, so that we get one?
We won't have time.
Okay.
We have a very, we're already fifteen minutes over.
Because I can draft language on this, I can draft language on this while we're transitioning into the, in and out of the other session, and then have it ready for when we do bring it to a vote at the end.
I just don't think we're, I mean, I, I might, I mean, I, I just, I would do worry, I, I would rather just pound it out right now, because it's going to take time to trans- transition.
Let's try this, uh, and Catherine, you tell me if this is where we're trying to go?
Thank you.
Has, has a strong commitment to, or has a, mm, I, I'm missing a word, strength across all programs, including fine arts, physical education, career and technical education, but when we get in that list, academic programs has to be there too, somewhere, right? So.
Well, I feel like academic programs are dropped so.
You're right, you're right, academics is covered, including fine arts, physical education, career and technical education, social and emotional learning, and creative learning.
I think we have athletics, early college, high school, um, advanced academics, like, I think we've got a big, you know, and, and we probably need a catch-all because we're going to forget something, there's such a great diversity of things.
Yeah, that's what I was like.
Yeah.
How about-
And I think it's sustaining it, strengthening it, and looking for new opportunities.
Okay, so there you go, has a commitment to sustaining, strengthening, what was the last one you said?
And looking for new opportunities.
And new opportunities across all programming, across all programming, what's that?
Well, and that's what we had, but I do think there's some value in naming, naming some things.
We could say such as.
Such as.
Such as.
Okay, fine arts.
Yeah, how about such as fine arts? I think two, two things we've really focused on in our district are fine arts and, um, like, the trauma-informed, social, emotional-
Social, emotional learning.
Early college, high school, and other advanced academics, career and technical education.
Okay, let's do that.
Right?
So.
And that's not it, there's lots more.
We're, we're saying such as.
I'm trying, I'm thinking of where I can plug things in, that I'm thinking of all the different programs.
Extracurricular opportunities is another for all, and do we need, like, an all students, that we need this to be broad, and?
So I-
Just, we, we need the equitable access.
So I'm committed to system.
Add it in there somewhere.
Yes.
I also like the language from the comment that I read earlier about system-wide alignment, because that's where this comes into play, is that this, this is, we are not saying that we have a hundred fifty different priorities in our district, we're saying that our priority around student achievement is recognizing that student achievement has multiple facets, and that achieving those goals isn't, i- it's about, um, aligning our systems in support of those goals.
You're saying, really, that it's an essential element of student success.
So I think that the systemic, the system-wide alignment, I think, addresses that to some degree.
Where do you think that would best fit?
I like that a lot.
Can't see.
Okay. I, I do want to make a suggestion, and it's just a prefix, but I think it's important, extracurricular to co-curricular.
Co-curricular, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
I'm good with it.
Okay, and so we just need a place for system-wide alignment. So, shall we read it again?
Maybe in the and, beginning, uh, strong commitment to equitable access.
And?
Is that two?
It's four.
I think two.
Fifty-two.
Oh, I'm saying, I'm-
Equitable access to, um-
I like the systemic, okay, so-
And system-wide alignment of, or systemic alignment of co-curricular program. We need to say sustaining and strengthening, or just-
No, we don't.
Have equitable access, and then we're aligning it systematically.
I, I think we, to me, I mean, you could have equitable access of a pretty wimpy bunch of programs.
So.
Has a strong, systemic alignment of strong, um-
Can I, if a parenthetical statement?
Of course.
Yeah, kind of-
So I think the terminology was putting equitable access first, so I think it, a, a strong commitment to strengthening and, what was the other word?
I have a place for it that might be equal, might be easier, if we say has a strong commitment to equitable access to and systemic alignment of a, a rich mix, something there, it doesn't necessarily have to be sustaining and strengthening, but a-
Yeah, a rich mix of, I would say-
Something, something there.
I, I want to, yeah, student-centered practices, or student-centered per, or like, whole child practices such as-
Whole child programming such as?
Sure, whole child programming.
Lynn?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
So equitable access to whole child programming. Such as-
It's in the, uh, Dr. Reach, it's after systemic alignment of, right?
Oh, okay, yes.
Equitable access to and systemic, systemic alignment of whole child programming such as?
Yeah. I like that.
And there's a missing M in program.
Programming.
Oh, yeah, program, yeah. Okay, I think we got it. So the public has seen how the sausage gets made, sorry, y'all. So, we have a quorum, so that's good, all right. Um, are there any other discussion items related to this? Okay, then, um, so Trustee Foster had made an original motion, I'm sorry, Ms. Badiya.
I think you should entertain a motion to amend the original motion to adopt, to include, uh, amm, uh, revisions made.
Okay, thank you. So we had a, we had a motion by Vice President Foster to adopt the, um, profile, um, is there a motion to make the amendments that we have just discussed?
You're okay with us adding the quorum?
Oh. Sure.
So moved.
Okay, so-
Accepted.
All right, so Trustee Kaufman has made a motion to make these changes, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Trustee Boswell, um, is there any, is there any discussion? Thank God, no. All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, the motion passes unanimously. We did it, we did it.
We still have to now vote for Foster's motion.
Oh, yeah, dart it. We did do it, okay. So now, um-
I'll second Trustee Foster's motion to approve the profile.
That's right, okay, so is there any discuss, so Trustee Foster's made a motion, um, Trustee Kaufman has seconded, is there any discussion on that? Nope, okay, those in favor, raise your right hand, the motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. So I did want to just make a brief mention about some of the, um, there were a couple of other things that the board is going to be discussing, um, and likely not going to vote on, but we will come to a consensus on that today, which will be regarding the pay and the, the openness of a search. So, um, at this time, we will now recess the open meeting at twelve fifty-five PM and move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Sections five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four, five-five-one-point-oh-seven-two, five-five-one-point-oh-seven-three, five-five-one-point-oh-eight-seven, five-five-one-point-oh-seven-six, five-five-one-point-one-two-nine, and five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one. When we are finished with the executive session, we will reconvene the open meeting, thank you very much. Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.